Good evening. I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wilmette Public Schools, District 39 for Monday, October 24th, 2016. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you. Principal Cindy Anderson will introduce Ramona, fourth grade Outdoor Education students to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Thank you. Come on up, guys. So these five students are fourth graders. And we just got back this past week from our annual outdoor education trip up to Laredo Taft in Oregon, Illinois. And we thought we'd share with you what a wonderful experience it was. We spent a lot of time together and the kids demonstrated independence, persistence, team building, and had a ton of fun. So I've asked them to share what they liked the most about outdoor ed with you.
Hi, I'm Evan and the thing I liked most about outdoor ed was definitely the survival class because we got to make forts.
My name is Demola and my favorite part of outdoor ed was instincts for survival because it was fun.
Hi, my name is Owen. My favorite thing about outdoor ed was the food because it's so good.
Hello, my name is Addison Yanas and my favorite thing about outdoor ed was bird watching because I got to see birds that I couldn't see at home.
My name is Ellen and my favorite thing about outdoor ed is the brand because I got to represent Ramona on it.
Thank you. Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and no sin for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming and sharing your experiences. I'd like to bring your attention to the artwork on display in the boardroom. It's presented by Catherine Robinson's Harper and High Crest students. Sixth graders studied op art in Bridget O'Reilly to create swirling self-portraits using symbols and words instead of a head and shoulder view. Fourth graders experiment with paint to create their color wheel, all seeing eyes. Second graders focused on the relationship between warm and cool colors in their shape-filled skies. And finally, first graders studied vases from various cultures to create their mixed-media vases. Now, may I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the September 26, 2016 Regular and Executive Session Meetings?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion having been made and seconded, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, would you please indicate by saying yea?
Yea.
Thank you. The motion carries by general consent. This brings us to the first opportunity for audience members to address the board. Is anybody in the audience, would anybody in the audience like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on with our meeting. Moving on to committee reports. The first is the Strategy Committee. And there was not a meeting since our last meeting. And the Strategy Committee meeting, the Strategy Committee will meet in January, January 30th, I think, in 2017. Facility Development Committee, Ms. Elcantro.
Yes. We met on October 17 here at the MEC. We received a presentation by Ingersoll Rand on performance contracting, including a detailed overview of proposed projects. The presentation was broken down by project with respect to the impact on facilities, financials, and sustainability, as well as project metrics and basis for recommendations. The administration will be reviewing the presentation and report and giving the FDC and the board recommendations on whether and how to proceed, particularly with respect to projects that are on our maintenance schedule already. STR's Colby Lewis provided an update on meetings with stakeholders at Ramona and McKenzie regarding renovations for library commons spaces, although still in draft stage, both plans integrate spaces that may be used flexibly for classroom space if needed. We expect a preliminary budget from STR at the next FDC meeting in November, with bidding expected to take place in January. The expectation is that a vote on final plans and budgets would take place at the February Board of Education meeting. Dr. Lechner proposed a space study to be conducted at High Crest to evaluate efficient use of space and synergies with future library commons. And we also discussed internal learnings from the library commons renovations already completed at Central, Harper, and the Junior High. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 7.
Great, thank you very much. Insurance Advisory Committee, Ms. Kearney.
There has not been a meeting of the Insurance Advisory Committee since our last meeting. The next meeting will be February 27th at 4:00 p.m. here.
Great, thank you very much. The Community Review Committee, their October 10th meeting was canceled due to Cubs game. So the next meeting will take place on the 7th of November here at the MEC. Educational Foundation, Dr. Lechner.
Yes, I have a few things to report. At the last meeting, they were talking about the Fashion Show and Bingo Night, which were both very successful and made all their financial targets and they were pleased with that. And the annual fall appeal is about to go out. They plan to have that out before Thanksgiving. The Science Olympiad is about to be launched and they're excited about that. And as you know, the district's taking on the competitive portion of Science Olympiad this year, and you're going to hear more about that when we talk about student fees. And then GRIP grants are due this Friday for staff. And then they're already planning for the Spring Distinguished Citizen Event, and we don't know who it is yet.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. And I understand the next meeting is the 16th of November for the foundation. WCSCA, Ms. Kearney.
WCSCA also did not meet since the last meeting, but the next meeting will be here at the MAC, November 14th, 4:00.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. School Finance, Mr. Flanagan.
School Finance Committee met on October 17th. We reviewed and discussed the 2016 tentative levy, which is on tonight's agenda under Annual Business. We also had a report on the one-to-one iPad program and some changes that will be rolled out in that area. We also did a review of student fees. This will be the subject of a report later in tonight's agenda as well. We covered in our committee meeting summer enrichment program fees, Connecting Kids program fees, Science Olympiad fees, and I think not to be discussed tonight, but on our committee's agenda were athletic fees and the credit card processing fee options available to the district. We then turned to long-range projections and discussed again in some more detail our expectations regarding potential tax freeze and state revenue redistribution. The next meeting of the School Finance Committee is on November 7.
Great, thank you very much. Legislative update, Ms. Elcantro.
Yes. First off, there's a ballot issue on the November 8th general election ballot that could have a financial impact on school districts, including District 39. There's a constitutional ballot question called the Illinois Transportation Taxes and Fees Lockbox Amendment, also known as the Safe Roads Amendment. If approved, the measure would collect all state's revenue raised from gas tax, tolls, license, vehicle registration fees, and put them in a lockbox under the Illinois Constitution. This would prevent lawmakers from spending those funds on anything other than transportation-related maintenance and operations. Additionally, the passage of this amendment may limit local taxing bodies, including school districts, by restricting the ability to transfer dollars from their transportation levy to operation funds. While the maintenance of transportation infrastructure is clearly a high priority, some question whether a constitutional mandate is the right direction. And even so, if in fact the amendment should apply to school districts who perhaps should be able to handle and direct their finances locally. A yes vote would support the amendment and a no vote would oppose the set aside of revenues for any specific purpose. The School Funding Reform Commission in Springfield continues to meet and confer. Much of what has been done at this point is background information and research, but there has been some discussion of ideas for potential alternative funding distribution plans. Most everyone appears to agree that additional funding is needed with respect to education in Illinois. And of course, the prospect of finding additional revenues brings up the ongoing saga of trying to agree on a state budget. The education budget approved last June covers the entire year, but spending authority for the rest of the budget expires on December 31. Now that all four legislative caucuses and the governor's office are fully engaged in the process, expectations are that some type of new school funding formula may be proposed in the spring. Also in Springfield, additional unbundled mandates have been enacted, which affect school districts. The list is unfortunately, as always, somewhat extensive. A representative sampling includes a requirement that districts annually report to Illinois State Board of Education every assessment measure used in that district, broken down by school, grade, and subset of students tested. A requirement that districts provide multiple new disclosure reports, notifications and details regarding student residency disputes and hearings. A requirement that districts request an asthma action plan from parents, and requiring certain personnel to receive training every two years regarding asthma, and a requirement of teacher institute days to provide training every two years on the ADA in the school environment. There are others. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Moving on to the informational items for this meeting. First, written communication. The board has not received any written communication this month. Dr. Lechner has our administrative announcements.
Yes, the first announcement didn't make the agenda, but I'm happy to say the Solid Waste Agency of North Cook County has given all of our schools a grant. And we want to thank Lisa Winter for writing these grants totaling $1,200 towards the purchase of reusable soup cups as we take one more step towards reducing our garbage and reducing our collective carbon footprint. Preschool vision and hearing screening. Each fall, District 39 partners with the Village of Wilmette to conduct preschool vision and hearing clinic. The Village Nurse Diane Bader, along with District 39 nurses Mary Norcat and Mary Ann Roche, screened 37 preschoolers on a Saturday morning. This helps our local nursery schools meet their state mandated requirement for screening preschoolers in ages three to five. League of Women Voters Candidates Forum. The evening of October 4th, Wilmette Junior High once again partnered with the League of Women Voters to host a candidate forum, this year featuring Ninth District U.S. Congressional candidates Jan Chakowsky and Joan McCarthy-Lesson. Seventh graders read questions submitted by social studies students, and it was an informative and interesting evening for all. Beyond Diversity Training. Six staff members from High Crest and Junior High participated in the Beyond Diversity Seminar hosted by Nutria High School. Beyond Diversity was a two-day workshop aimed at giving participants the opportunity to enter into courageous conversations about race, as well as relationships within the school community. We look forward to drawing on the experiences and the knowledge gained, and this work is tied directly to our strategic plan on school climate and creating a culture of empathy. And lastly, we had two FOIA requests this month. The first was from Catherine Smizer of NBC5 Chicago, seeking details about our undesignated EpiPen, in other words, epinephrine auto-injectors. The second was Mary Zellers of Impact Networking, requesting copier printer lease and maintenance or service contracts, managed print service contracts, and outsourced managed IT programs. And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Our strategic plan update is the 2016-2017 superintendent and district goals.
Yes, I don't have a lot to say about this one. Annually, the board is required to approve my goals, and these goals, areas, the deliverables, and measures are all directly linked to the District 39 strategic plan that you approved last month. And there's really nothing new since last month. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Any board members have any questions or comments on the strategic goals? No? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to our first piece of Annual Business, Select Student Fees.
Yes, it's select because a handful of our fees require early approval, as parents need information to make decisions about summer programs. As reviewed at the School Finance Committee meeting, summer programs are to be fiscally self-sustaining. And administration is seeking board approval to reinstate the fee for our basic class and increase the enrichment fees slightly. All of this would reduce the fiscal deficit reported last month for our summer programs. The Connecting Kids Preschool Tuition is also annually reviewed. This fee review compares the charges from other local preschools in private and public, and we remain competitively low. And finally, the CNI Department, as I said earlier, is taking over the competitive portion of the Science Olympiad program. Therefore, a fee structure is needed. The administration recommends using the same fees that the foundation charged last year. As this program is about to start, your approval is needed this evening. And Ms. Buscemi, was there anything to add to that?
No. No.
Great, are there any comments or questions from any of our board members? Okay, great. Thank you. Then let's move on to establishing the tax year 2016 estimate of levy and hearing announcement.
Yes, we're adopting the resolution of the estimated levy for 2016 this evening. The proposed increase across all funds is 3.4% over last year's levy. With CPI at 0.7%, the bulk of the proposed levy increases for new construction within the Wilmette community. We're happy to report that there's a significant uptick in new home building in our community, and Ms. Buscemi has this report.
Thank you. This evening, we are presenting the estimated levy for 2016. The levy is the amount requested by a governmental entity to be raised from property taxes. On the screen, you will see the levy calendar that lays out the dates for this process. Tonight, we are adopting the resolution of estimated levy and the announcement of the public hearing scheduled on December 12, 2016 at 7:00 p.m. This levy estimate is based on several variables. The first is equalized assessed value, or EAV. This is not available at this time. Last year, we had a decrease in EAV of 2.64%. The year before, a slight increase of 1.47%. And in the prior four years, the district's EAV declined. We are calculating no increase in our EAV for the 2016 estimate of levy. When the first installment is distributed, it is based on the 2015 EAV. However, when the county clerk extends the final payment of taxes, it will be adjusted to reflect the actual 2016 EAV. The next variable is the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. The December 2015 CPI of .7% was used for the 2016 levy. Under the Property Tax Extension Limiting Law, or PTEL, the base levy increase cannot exceed the lesser of the prior year's CPI, or 5%, plus new property growth. Our new property growth has not been released yet. We are using a 12-year historical average of 14.8 million to estimate this amount, plus the impact of the Mather Place on Old Glenview Road of 16.5 million. The Mather Place had substantial improvements, and the understanding was the property would no longer be tax-exempt once it had its certificate of occupancy this year. In addition, we are including another 8 million for new property throughout the community, such as the new Wilmette Circle subdivision and the property at 611 Green Bay Road. As a result, we are projecting new property growth for 2016 at 39.3 million. The actual assessed value for new property growth will not be determined until closer to spring. This aggregate levy includes debt service of 1.2 million, which is an increase of 2.09% from last year. This amount reflects the $200,000 abatement to taxpayers for the 2016 levy. We are recommending the board approve the resolution regarding the estimated amounts to be levied for the tax year 2016 at 52.5 million, and allocated among the funds as shown on this slide. The 2016 estimated levy represents a total increase over last year of 3.4%. The law requires a public hearing when a tax levy exceeds 5% of the prior year extension. However, District 39 upholds a higher standard for transparency than is required by law. Are there any questions?
Board members, do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. So our next annual business item is the 2016 Fall Assessment Report.
Yes, this is an executive summary of our Performance Series and our Park Assessment results from the spring of 2016. And Ms. Lee has this report.
Good evening. I will be sharing the 2016 Fall Assessment Report with you tonight, which will include our local assessment Performance Series and the state assessment Park results for the 2015-2016 school year. I will begin with the Performance Series data. As the board is aware, Performance Series is a computer-adaptive multiple-choice test that is used to monitor students' achievement and progress over time. Typically, grades two through eight students are assessed three times yearly, fall, winter, and spring, in reading and mathematics. However, due to the time requirement for the first administration of Park in 2015, District 39, like many other districts, eliminated the spring administration Performance Series for grades three through eight. Grades two students did take the assessment in spring since they do not participate in Park, and this is reflected in the data tables to follow. This table and the table on the next slide presents the results in reading and mathematics, respectively. The board is being presented with district average scale scores, percentage of student scores in the average or above range nationally, and the percentage of students who have met local gains targets within the context of grade-level cohorts. For example, the progress of our current fifth-grade students, the class of 2020, is highlighted on the screen. And during their second and fourth-grade years, the district's average scale scores are shared. With winter scores for the year, they did not take Performance Series in the spring of 2015. The percentage of District 39 who fall in the average and above-average range for achievement nationally are also shared. But the last row for each cohort is the percentage of students who met fall-to-spring locally-normed gains targets. The gains targets ranges are new for District 39 and provide a perspective on student progress that focuses on growth rather than attainment. This information may be familiar to the board because we shared this data in a board report presented in June. We had added this growth data for the first time and asked our data consultant to apply the ranges to past years, and that is what is being represented in that last row for you. This table presents the results in mathematics in the same manner as the previous slide for reading. Overall, for both Performance Series, reading and mathematics, District 39 students' average scale score for each grade level is beyond the upper threshold of the national average range. District 39 students have performed well on this assessment in the past and continue to demonstrate success. We also administer the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers Park to grades three through eight students. And the intent of the online assessment is to measure students' current performance aligned to their grade-specific Illinois English Language Arts and Mathematics learning standards. So evidence of understanding and the application of concepts are emphasized more than the determination of one correct answer within the assessment design. During the spring of 2015, Park was administered to students in two sessions, performance-based assessment around March, and the end-of-year assessment in May. And last spring, the Park assessment was modified to one session. Although the assessment format changed, Park considers the 2015 student score the baseline for comparisons to 2016 and future years. And in addition, student, district, and state reports have been finalized earlier, making it possible for the results to be included in this fall assessment report. Last year, Park data was released in December and presented to the board in January. Later this month, parents will receive their child's English Language Arts literacy and mathematics assessment reports. And each report provides an overall performance, a score graph, and a performance level breakdown of specific skills. And although the overall performance level provides a measure of progress, the skill breakdown provides more description to aid in the interpretation of scores. So in addition, school, district, state, and cross-state averages are provided for comparisons within. On October 31st, so towards the end of this week on Halloween, Illinois State Board of Education will publicly release all final Park results. So the new district-level reports provide specific and useful information to assist the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. And a breakdown of how our students perform by standard is new and will help us identify curriculum and instruction strengths and any areas for improvement. Park describes student performance and progress toward grade-specific standards according to these five levels, level one through five, with one did not meet expectations and five exceeding expectations. Although the scale range for English Language Arts and Mathematics is from 650 to 850, I found it interesting that the breakdown of level ranges differ for levels four and five. This almost creates a sliding scale, and I can give you specifics if you would like to know. But as far as levels one through three, they stay really consistent as far as what the range would be. However, level four, defined specifically by grade and also the content area, the upper range of that could vary from 784 to 789, all the way to 809, which I thought was very interesting. So we inquired about it, but haven't heard a response back yet. For comparison purposes, we will use levels four and five, since these are defined as the met and exceeded expectations. So this graph compares the percentage of students who fall within level four and level five to the statewide results in mathematics. And this graph compares our students who fall within level four and five to the statewide results in English Language Arts. As you can see, the percentage of District 39 students meeting or exceeding grade-specific standards is well above statewide results in both content areas, double or more than double depending on the grade level. The majority of the students who are not represented in this graph fall in level three, performance with signals that they are approaching standards. Tables three and four in the board report share the percentage at the other levels for you to review more specifically. During last year's assessment report, the Department of CNI called the 2015 results the baseline for Park data. However, with the changes in test format design implemented in the spring of 2016, District 39 recommends that these results serve as District 39 baseline. We know that the assessment will remain consistent for this year with one test session. A couple of more years of Park data will allow District 39 to analyze trends over time. And in the meantime, the improved district-level reports provide us valuable information that will guide our reflections in curriculum and instruction. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from our board members or comments? Yes, yeah, John?
Thank you, Ms. Lee, for that report. Very interesting. I'm going to ask you for a broader perspective, which you may or may not have, given your reading in the professional literature. I'm looking at the Park tables. I'll hold them up because they're not the slides that you showed. And I'm looking specifically at the far-right column for Tables three and four, where I see District 39 compared to Illinois statewide in terms of percentage of students meeting or exceeding. Our District 39 numbers- Our District 39 numbers are in line with what I guess I expected. What I want to ask you about, I don't mean to chuckle, are these Illinois statewide numbers? These are abysmally low, if I'm reading it correctly.
You are reading it correctly, and they are low, yes.
And I want to add to that, because I predicted this would happen when Park first came into place, because Park is much more aligned to curriculum like ours than the rest of the state, and we also have the assessment tools that we've been using for years and years and years and years. So our district is much better prepared to take an assessment like this.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I think I expected to hear that, and that's good news. My question, Ms. Lee, do you know whether Illinois is in the large part of distribution among states and how they're performing on Park, or is Illinois an outlier, low, or sort of?
Well, according to the preliminary graphs that we've received, they took the cross-state information and compared it with Illinois, and Illinois is pretty on par with the cross-state information.
Okay.
So District 39 is outperforming. I love that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mark?
Thanks for the report. And it's great work to see sort of how we're keeping track of things. The new piece, as you pointed out, is the growth statistics, and I want to make sure that I'm reading the charts on page 3 of our report, Table 2, and also the similar one, Table 1, which is on page 2. I want to make sure I'm reading them correctly. So my recollection is that we defined the growth target as the 25th percentile of growth.
Yes.
So if we, and I think it was over seven years. So what I would expect to see is if we did a seven, instead of doing like, you know, grade 2 for one year, if we did grade 2 for seven years, then we would have 75% of students outperforming basically by definition.
Yes.
Because we've defined it as the lower 25. Okay.
Yes.
I want to make sure I understood that correctly, because then, when I see these numbers in my head, I'm comparing them to 75%. That's sort of my, and you can go above or below, right?
Absolutely.
So I guess my question is, as we look at this, do we have any thoughts now on how we would identify interesting trends or actions that we might take for those trends? And maybe any trends we've already identified?
Sure. Because we were retrofitting some of these ranges with the others, I think that, in general, the observation would be that we've been pretty consistent at staying, if not a little bit higher. If you look and use that 75% as your range, we have growth targets, or students meeting growth targets, up into the 85th percent. They are showing that if you, how do I explain this? That the ranges don't necessarily define whether our students have grown or not, it's their actual performance that are meeting beyond what we said were our expectations with the gains. So I guess in general, I would say that what we would be looking for is moving forward, increasing that beyond the 75th percent, and then in some areas, we are already there.
Definitely agree. Okay. And the one thing that I noticed that I thought was interesting is that, and I haven't processed in my head how to think about this yet, but if I look at the Performance Series math, grade 4 specifically, if I read from left to right across the grades, I notice that grade 4 is the one that sort of dips, right? So for instance, for the class of 2016, it goes 82%, and then down to 78%, and then after that, it's 79s and higher, you know? And you can kind of see a similar pattern. So I just will be interested to hear, I don't have a conclusion on that yet, although I find it interesting. So I'll be interested to hear how we take that information, comparing it to the 75% number, and sort of say, okay, now what does that tell us that we need to do? So that'll be a great, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly?
Okay, so I don't know, I may be asking the same question that Mark asked, but I will ask it a slightly different way.
I hope I can answer.
Okay, so of those students not meeting Performance Series growth targets.
Yes.
Are there noteworthy trends in that group? I know there's variation, but are there, do the successful growth targets tend to correlate with students at the high end of performance scores, low end, middle? Is there any?
Yeah, you know, I might be disappointing you.
Yeah, that's okay.
The, when we retrofitted for the ranges, we just wanted to know if, just even in that respect, to drill down to the level that we are beginning to do right now would be challenging to go back, you know, five, six years to do. But right now, what we have is, we have information about these students and whether they've met their gains targets from fall to spring for last year. We have currently compiled the fall 2016 Performance Series score and where they are in the baseline. We have Park scores now, which has turned into actually a little bit of a job of aligning student for student. So we're gathering a lot of information at this point to provide you the type of analysis that you are asking for.
Is it your sense that there may be other adaptive tests like MAP that would be better able to fine-tune or identify any of those things, or do you not necessarily think that's the case?
From my personal opinion, from what I know of other assessments just like MAP, or actually specifically MAP, they have tools embedded in MAP that far surpass some of the reports that Performance Series is able to do. Another important piece is based on the results of the students, which they get immediately, which is very different than when we, you know, choose to share our scores with our families. They get their results immediately. And not only that, the teachers receive reports that actually help in grouping students according to the standards that are embedded in that assessment. So personally, yes.
All right.
I just want to add that when you say immediately, you mean now.
Right.
All right. This is, that's some of the detail I was interested in. Okay, then the last question, I mean, Park is used by the state in posting, for example, just district report cards, for example. But from an internal standpoint here at District 39, are Park scores being used for any substantive purpose other than satisfying reporting requirements?
Oh, absolutely will be used. These were just released informally. The official final release will be on Halloween, when the public will receive it. That's why if you go onto the schools' report card, you won't find this year's until then. So if you'd like to check it out, that's then. However, I have district-level evidence statement analyses, so I can kind of show you visually here. We're not supposed to share it publicly yet, but what it does is it outlines per-grade, per-content area where the state, cross-state, how they performed, how the state performed, and then how we performed as an entire grade level. And what's interesting is we can definitely see trends. This is drilled down to a level that is extremely useful for us, so we can tell where in our curriculum or in our instruction we need to improve and where we have significant strengths. So I actually did a cursory look at some of that, so I would say if you want me to, I can identify a couple of things that I know that we would have to move forward in communicating with our teachers and making sure that our curriculum addresses that yet.
Okay. Does something top of mind stick out on that?
Yeah, you know, actually, one does. The literary analysis as far as poems, they give me specific information, like explaining how standards fit together to provide an overall structure. And if I were to review and think about our curriculum, I don't know if we have that specifically outlined for our teachers, and so I would say I'd go back and look at that and see where we can provide some professional development if needed, or is it just an awareness that the teachers need, that that seems to be an area that our students kind of fell below the state level in? So, but overall, we did really well. If you look, we hover, our little symbol is, the district symbol is a green dot, and it shows how we hover over significantly the state and the cross-state data. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Frank?
Hello. Another good report, but I want more.
Of course.
So let's stay with the Performance Series for a second. I always have, I still have trouble with the bottom number here, the 75% target. You know, we defined the target based on averages over seven years to be 75%, then we're off by plus or minus 2 or 3%, and we say, well, then we're really close. I don't have, there is no metric. I mean, if we defined it as 75% and we're at 73, we say, well, that's real close to 75. But if we're at 77, we say that's close. If we're at 71, that's an outlier, but it doesn't, so what is the metric? How will we ever know if that number means anything?
So I think one of the ways that I could try to explain even a percentage that's 85%, 85% of our students have met their growth gains targets within the range of the 25th and the 75th. This last word is the most important one, percentile. So for example, if a student range score fall, or the growth target falls that's similar to other students, there could be more students than 75% of our total number that meets the gains target. That's a little, it's hard to help distinguish, to be honest, but it's really the repetitiveness of the score that makes the percentage of percentile higher than what you anticipate the range to be. But if we're going straight on percentage, then we would really not need to know any of this because it would be a total number, 25% of the students. You know, just that total number, as opposed to a percentile score that in some years our students are far surpassing, you know, in quantity of meeting those gains targets as opposed to a percentage of students who have done that. I hope that's clear.
Well, I guess I'm still looking at, you know, we have this chart, we have a row on each chart, you know, in each box, that's a number. And when we say it's, you know, 73, it's like, well, that's close. And when we say it's, you know, 82, that's not too, that's actually good. Then we have a lot of boxes that we don't average together. I don't have a way of knowing if we're making progress, if there's one grade that's having a problem, if there's one year that we, you know, didn't do as well as the year before. There isn't any metric to compare year to year, box to box, other than the target 75, in which case then I guess we would go through everything that's not 75 and say that there might be an issue there, and I don't think we want to do that. But we need to have a metric, or we need to put different numbers on this chart, because if there's no metric, then the number doesn't add any real value.
Okay. If you could allow me some time to think about what that metric would be and maybe ask some questions further with you, I will try to convey this data in a different way.
Okay, that'd be good. So I have a couple more questions then. We expect and actually require that we do significantly better than the state.
Yes.
So it's great that we're doing significantly better than the state, but what we like to set our goal as is, are we doing as good or better than other high-performing districts? Are we doing as good as better than other feeder districts? And I know not all that information is available yet, but the report isn't complete until we see that picture, because the fact that we're doing twice as good as the state doesn't really add any value.
Yes.
We agree with that, and we're looking at some options that will help us get there. So we have some future board reports coming.
Okay, good, thank you. And then, let's see, so male and female breakouts.
Yes.
So not that long ago, because I remember we used to have male-female breakouts on these things, and in particular, last year in the Park Assessment on the reading, there was a significant delta between the male and the female scores. So one, that also would be in the list of things that I would like to see more at a future report, and two, if there is a delta like there was last year, I looked on the dashboard, and there is a 12-point difference, 12 percentage point difference between the male and the female scores for reading last year. Did that improve? You know, what did we do to make that better? You know, is there another issue like that this year?
Sure. When it gets officially released with the final, I think we can extract the same data. I haven't calculated the delta for that or the P factor for that yet, but I can definitely do that. I do, I kind of anticipated the possibility of this question, and so I can tell you, for example, what I found interesting, there was a significant percentage difference in a particular grade's English Language Arts, and it does show that stereotypical notion that girls outperform boys in English Language Arts. However, one thing I found fascinating and I'm extremely proud of is that in another grade, stereotypically, math is a strength of boys, but in this particular grade, over 10% of the girls outperformed the boys. But as far as a district profile, I would be able to give you more information in that way, not drill down in this way, but more information in that way after October 31st.
Okay. And just one more point.
Sure.
If we said the sentence, stereotypically, boys do better on math, so it's okay?
Oh, no.
We'd never say that. You know, stereotypically, two or three years in a row, girls have done significantly better than boys in reading, and there isn't the same level of discussion on that as there has been on the MAP curriculum, so I would like to hear more about that going forward.
Absolutely.
Great. Any other?
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for a fine report. We'll move on to the Fall Housing Report.
Yes, this is another annual report. District 39 has 3,648 students housed in our six buildings, which is a slight decrease from the fall of 2015, and Dr. Thrasher has this report.
Thank you. Dr. Lechner said every year, districts are required to report to Illinois State Board of Education the number of students that attend district schools based on September 30th registration. In this report, we refer to it as the Fall Housing because it's actually a headcount of the number of students that are housed in District 39 buildings. As Dr. Lechner stated, we do have 3,648 students in our schools, which was a slight reduction from last year, and when comparing this report with the Fall 2015 report, you can note that kindergarten and 8th grades are where we have the greatest differences and reductions between the two years. So we had less kindergartners enroll this year, and we had a big 8th grade class last year that graduated. We also count enrollment, and enrollment is the number of students which District 39 is responsible for their education. Enrollment is calculated starting with the Fall Housing number, and we would subtract any non-district students attending district schools. We have three currently that are tuitioned into our schools. Then we add our early childhood itinerant speech, we add students that are outplaced, we add students that are attending our parochial schools and getting services through an individual service plan. When we add all that up, the total is 3,691, so that is our enrollment count, and yearly we will continue to analyze this number for trends while we're monitoring our enrollment. Is there any questions about these numbers?
Any questions from board members or comments? No, I don't see any. Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, Frank, sorry.
There seems to be a geographical trend. I know several years ago, Central was the largest, McKenzie was close. This year, especially when you add things together, Ramona is almost tied for first, McKenzie dropped back. Is that a pattern? If it is a pattern, do we, are we starting to think about some contingencies about what we do in terms of balancing? we do in terms of balancing the, the school districts, et cetera? I know that's really painful, but you know, I, I think that's a trend that may be developing, and I'd like to understand it better.
Yeah, we, we're always monitoring that, and we are, you're correct, there has been, but it's less, it's less, in my view, about increasing enrollments at Ramona and Harper as declining enrollments at Mackenzie and Central. I think that's, there's more affordable, I think that was not good. There's, the housing market is less expensive on the west side of town. But I'm not, I'm not concerned about that just yet. We added four classrooms at Ramona Elementary School. Harper's able to accommodate at this point in time. So, but that would be something that could be an option if we became worried about it. And we do finance, we do enrollment projections each year, so you get a chance to see that, and we're not, right now, we're not worried.
Right, okay. I mean, it looked like Ramona was near its historical high point, too.
One thing about Ramona I always keep in mind is that we have our early childhood program there, and there are 72 students on September 30th. So if you subtract those, although some of those children are Ramona students, but if you would subtract those out, then that number would look less.
Thank you.
I have one question. Do you expect the decrease in kindergarten to continue, or the lower class sizes, or any ideas on that? No? It's hard to predict?
Alice, I couldn't hear your question.
I just asked if they, what they expected for the future kindergarten classes, since we've seen a little bit declining enrollment and how that might affect our enrollment.
Yeah, we'll have enrollment projections coming up, so you'll get a chance to see what our best guess is for kindergarten.
Great, okay.
But that is our hardest guess.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to Board Policy Reviews. The first is the third and final reading of our Revised Board of Education Policy 7: 70.
Yes, last month, the board asked if we should be referencing the ages of students that we typically serve with in District 39 within this policy. And we reached out to legal counsel, and they responded to the board question saying that school code pretty much dictates that, and statutory language does as well, so they said we should keep it as it is. That same counsel also suggested adding a few more steps, six through nine, under the absenteeism and truancy program. Dr. Glawacki, anything to add to that?
No.
Okay, do we have any comments or questions from the board? Nope, okay, great. So the next is the first reading of some revised policies.
Yes, this first read policies are all related to student discipline. Dr. Denise Thrasher has been working diligently for almost a year to make sure our current practices are in line with new regulations. The revisions to these policies are the final step in making sure our practices and policies are aligned to current law. Dr. Glawacki has this report. Anything to add?
I would just ask if there are questions or comments about the revisions.
Board members, do we have any comments or questions? No? Okay, I have a couple, I have a couple. Nobody else does. The first in 7:190, in the prohibited student conduct, I'm looking at number six, which is at the bottom of the second page. Two comments. One is that they're saying that, the, the policy says, the use of cellular telephone video recording devices, et cetera, et cetera, in any manner that disrupts, disrupts the educational environment or violates the rights of others, including uses advice to take photographs in locker rooms, et cetera. Do we want to add the word "or" videos? We just reference photographs. Okay. I mean, I don't, all those things can take videos also, hm? Or to record. Yeah. In any manner. Yep, yep. And then in the third from bottom line there, unless, unless otherwise banned under this policy or by the building principal, all electronic devices must be kept powered off and out of sight. We do use electronic devices for educational purposes. I don't know how we want to define that by either saying personal or except for devices used for educational purposes. Might be helpful in there?
We had a discussion about that. I think we thought that letter A, following that colon, is what allows it to...
Oh, the teacher grants permission.
Correct. So if the teacher is aware, the supervising teacher is aware of the device that's being used and gives permission, then it's permissible.
Okay, I, that's probably okay. I was just thinking, it is such, it's used, it's pervasive in our educational program. So maybe we want to reference it specifically.
Yeah, we'll check that out.
Check it out, okay. I think that was my big comment, just one second here. Oh, there's one typo in 7:210, page two of the third page at the bottom, number four, C. The likelihood that such conduct will affect the delivery of education for, I think the word should be "other."
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none. This is the second opportunity for audience members to address the board. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none. Let's continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda?
I have a question on the consent agenda. The dispose, the action, which is the subject, dispose of executive session audio recordings on the printed form, the dates do not match the date in our agenda. And I believe the dates on the agenda are probably the correct ones, May 19, 2014, June 23, 2014, August 25, September 29, and October 27.
Is that true? Okay. So do you want to make that motion?
So I will move that we remove from the consent agenda the action item to dispose of executive session audio recordings.
Okay, join me in a second. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll remove that. Okay, Mr. Steen, would you like to continue with the consent agenda, or proceed with the motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will proceed with a motion, and I will skip number eight. So here we go. I move that we approve the personnel report dated October 24, 2016. I move that we establish a tax-year 2016 estimate of levy as per Exhibit A attached, and to approve the announcement of a public hearing on the proposed levy scheduled to immediately proceed the regular December 12 meeting of the Board of Education. I move that we approve the 2016-2017 superintendent district goals. I move that we approve the attached student fee schedule. I move that we approve as third and final reading of the Revised Board of Education Policy 7:70, attendance and truancy. I move that we approve as first read Revised Board of Education Policy 7:190, student discipline, 7:210, expulsion procedures, 7:220, bus content, conduct, excuse me, and 7:230, misconduct by students with disabilities. I move that we approve to release, excuse me, approve the release to the public of the executive session minutes of November 16, 2015, and April 18, 2016. I move that we approve the accounts payable for bills listed between September 27, 2016, and October 24, 2016, in the following amounts. Educational fund, $486,664.18. O&amp;M fund, $144,546.76. Transportation fund, $158,716.45. Capital projects fund, $39,414. For a total, all funds of $829,341.39. I move that we approve the manual checks issued between September 27, 2016, and October 24, 2016, in the following amounts. Education fund, excuse me, educational fund, $420,582.05. O&amp;M fund, $28,449.24. Capital, or excuse me, transportation fund, $28.74. And capital projects, a negative $26,546.25. For a total, all funds of $431,513.78.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. As moved, the consent agenda is approved. Mr. Steen, I'd like to go back to the approval of, to dispose of the executive session audio recordings. You are correct, the correct dates are those of the agenda.
Okay.
So may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the disposal of executive session audio recordings pursuant to the district policy for the following dates. May 19, 2014, June 23, 2014, August 25, 2014, September 29, 2014, and October 27, 2014.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Do we call a roll? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, have it, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Let's move on to conference items. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any good in welfare? Except Go Cubs. Okay. In addition to. Now I'd like to seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion is carried. We are now adjourned to executive session. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight.